...for partial allegiance.
[inaudible 00:01:18].
[inaudible 00:01:21].
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to December 7th meeting. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything, come to the microphone, identify yourself. And with that, could we have the roll?
Cedar.
Foley.
Here.
Kinzvater.
Here.
Kleeman.
Here.
Kappa.
Report.
Here.
McCartney.
Here.
I have a motion to excuse me, or Cedar.
So move.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda. Council amendments of November 16th, and special council amendments meetings are of the 23rd recommendation to approve. Cemetery trustees meeting October 20th to receive. Historical commission meetings amendments of October 8th to receive. Historical museum research center annua report to receive.
So move.
Support, moved in support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Historical commission presentation.
You ready?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Freehand. I'm chairman of the St. Clair Historical Commission, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present, formally present, the annual report. You just approved it in your consent agenda. And as you can see from the slide, this is the annual report for the period October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015. You had a copy in your packet. I also provided you a copy of the brochure from the museum. And what we wanted to do tonight was to give you some of the highlights of what's in the annual report itself. Before I do that, as I said, I'm chairperson of the Historical Commission. I'd like to introduce some of the other people who are members of the commission that are here in the audience tonight. This is, it's not a special activity that's going on that drew all these people necessarily. There are many members of the commission. I do want to introduce Bill Kleeman. As you know, he is your council representative to the Historical Commission. He replaced Jane Krebs, who unfortunately passed away last year. Some of the other people who are here, our treasurer is Charles Humberg, and Commissioner Georgie Burns, sitting next to him, Commissioner June Ingles, sitting next to her, and Commissioner Mary Boda, sitting next to her, and behind in the middle is Chrissy Gordon, Commissioner, and also one of our volunteers, Beth Stewart, and Tom Pennewell in the back is an occasional volunteer also. So we appreciate them being here this evening. How many of you happen to see this? Did I see this article? Okay.
Yes.
You noticed a headline? Museums are vital in the community. And we feel that the Historical Commission and the museum definitely is a very vital part of the St. Clair community. And it's primarily because of the activities and the people, like the volunteers that I just introduced, that makes it a vital part of the community. The mission of the Historical Commission, and I think this is an important one, we do have a mission statement, and the whole purpose of this, the whole purpose of the museum and the Historical Commission, is to add value to the quality of life for the residents and the visitors of St. Clair. And that's a very important aspect of what we do. That is our mission. We don't just exist just to collect things. Now, in that mission statement, there are a number of fat, a number of elements in that that really give us the driving force of what we do. Firstly, first is to preserve St. Clair history. And that's a history of not just the buildings, but it's also the people, of the stories, of the businesses, and every aspect of the community, to preserve that. And we even have some of the official city records, we have some records from the library, and so on. So we are a storehouse to preserve St. Clair history. We also operate the museum. Now, as you, for those of you who have been there, you know that it's located on Fourth Street between Cass and Trumbull, and it's been there since, as a museum, since 1973. It is the First Baptist Church that was built in 1873, so it's over 100, over 100 years old. The museum operates every Tuesday. We're there every Tuesday with a lot of the volunteers, from 9:30 until 12:30 throughout the year. And then in the summertime, we're there from, from Saturday and Sunday, from 1:30 to 4:30 after, in the afternoon, from May through the month of October. We also assist people with research, people coming into the area, looking for information about the homes that they just bought, or some information about their families, and also helping our own residents with some genealogical research. We reach out to the community. That's part of our mission, is to reach out, to engage the community in variety of activities, as well as programs and presentations. Our mission, our final mission, and this we take very seriously, we promote the city of St. Clair. We're part of, we're part of the city, we are a commission of the city, but we feel very strongly in working with the DDA and the Chamber of Commerce to promote, to promote St. Clair as a good place to live and a good place to visit. Now, as I mentioned, we have volunteers, and I think we're probably one of the largest of the volunteer groups in the city of St. Clair. We have 14 commissioners, and we also have 18 other regular, part-time volunteers who participate throughout the course of the year, whether it be Tuesday mornings, or on weekends, or other time periods. Two of these people are new this year, and just since this annual report, which ended September 30th, we've added three new volunteers. So we're constantly getting new volunteers, and we're always looking for younger people, particularly, because as we age, we certainly want to engage younger people in the history of their community. Now, what's critical about the volunteers, and I put this number up there, because I think it, it really represents what you're getting from the St. Clair Historical Commission. You're getting more than 3,400 volunteer hours every year. Now, that might be on Tuesday mornings, it might be on weekends, but it also, a lot of the volunteers put in a good bit of time on their own during the week, or on weekends, at other times during the course of the year. Now, we provide a number of programs during the course of the year, and some of you may have attended these programs. They're either on Thursday nights, or in this case, the first one, and this was in October of 2014, this was a cemetery walk. And we took a look at the lives and times, and some of the stories about St. Clair doctors and nurses. Now, this was put on by Joanne Kinzvater and Ron Brenner. And what we encourage people to do who attend these is to tell their own stories. So we try to capture these stories. We videotape all of our presentations, so we're capturing a lot of the stories that people tell about their experiences with the doctors or the nurses, and that then is added to the archives that we have in the St. Clair history. In November, we showcased more than 3,000 artifacts from the Donald J. Blaine collection. He was a seaman from St. Clair. He sailed on the freighters, the Great Lakes freighters, for more than 25 years, and he collected almost anything you can possibly imagine, DVDs, VHS tapes, books, charts, pictures, those kinds of things. So now we have a fantastic array of information, and three-dimensional objects, too, like an astrolabe, or compass, magnetic compass, and those sorts of things, some artifacts from the Stuart J. Court, which was the first of the thousand footers on the Great Lakes. Then in April of 2015, we decided to have a little bit of fun, and so Chrissy Gordon hosted at her house, one of the Hopkins houses up on Hill, a program we called Uptown Abbey. And this was a takeoff on Downton Abbey, and everybody had an opportunity to dress up in period costume, and we showed pictures of, that were taken by an individual. What was his name, Chrissy?
Albert Schroeder.
Albert Schroeder, who was about 18 years old in, in 1918, and he took, he had one of the original box cameras, and he took all kinds of photos of just people frolicking around St. Clair, enjoying it, enjoying St. Clair. So we had an opportunity to, to go back through and enjoy St. Clair from, from pictures that were taken from about 1915 on through 1925. Then in May, Chuck Humberg presented a program on St. Clair people in the Civil War. This was Colonel Simeon Brown and Henry Whiting among the, among the people that were presented. This, by the way, is the 150th anniversary of the ending of the Civil War, and it's why we had a program dedicated to this particular bit of information, a bit of history. The final program of the fiscal year was in September, and this was the pub crawl to the past. And what we did was, which is the hotel, is that the?
Cadillac.
The Cadillac, the Cadillac Hotel, sketches and photos of hotels, and if you go back to just after prohibition, and maybe in some cases even right around the, before prohibition ended, there were a number of pubs, historic pubs in and around St. Clair, many more than there are now. And so what we did was to take people and give them an opportunity to tell some stories. And one of the things in the Cadillac Hotel, that the bar now, there is a, there is a bullet hole in the bar, in the Cadillac Hotel bar, and there is a story that goes along with that. So when we have programs like this, people start adding, again, those, those kinds of stories that make St. Clair history much more personal, much more entertaining. What's most significant about this, oops, I keep pressing the wrong button, I'll just, is that of these, at these five programs, we had more than 420 people attend, and that's a significant number of people that took part in the programs that we offered this past year. Now, in community outreach, we quite often get people coming into the museum, even people that have lived in St. Clair all their lives and have never been in the museum. And this year, we counted 175 first-time visitors. And they came, and invariably, when they come in, they say, "I really have to come back. I have to see more of what's here." We provide tours for students. We had four classrooms that, from Gearing, two from Gearing and two from Eddy, that came to the museum this past year. That's fairly traditional for second and third graders to come and visit the museum. And we try to make history relevant to them during these tours. We also go and do presentations. I'll dress up in red coat, and we go into the classrooms and do some interactive presentations. They get a chance to barter for furs, they get a chance to build a fort, and do some things of that nature. So it's engaging them in the history of their community, and the things that they can relate to. Chuck Humberg did presentations for the Library First Thursday Program, and also for groups in, at, at a meeting at the port here on the museum. Again, in community outreach, during the bike parade, and we worked with Therese Hawkins and the Recreation Department, and they ended the bike parade at the museum, so we had old-time games for kids, and the kids also had an opportunity to do a scavenger hunt upstairs in the museum. We provided a bus tour for about 45 seniors who were visiting the area, the Blue Water area. We gave them a tour of, of St. Clair present and past, to give them, give them really a highlight of what's available in, in this community. We exhibited at the art fair and the antique car show. We also had floats in the, and this is a picture from this year's Santa Parade, and years past, we marched with the Fort St. Clair banner, marched in red coat, and had people dressed up in period costumes. So we take an active role in the, the Santa Parade. And Chrissy Gordon, Gordon and myself also serve on the Historic District Study Committee. Now, we are constantly having people come in and saying, "Would you like to have this?" Now, some people think just because it's old, we want to have it. We really don't have, have room to store all of these things. But in the past year, we've decided to accept at least 700 artifacts or photo donations. And in many cases, these photos, they're scanned in, and so they're digitized. So they become, not only do we have a, a record of it, and we, we might have a, an actual photo, but we also have it on, on, in a digital format. And that digitizing becomes very important, because through a digital process, which is what we're engaged in, we can index things and we can find things. So when we're trying to do an online search, digitizing photos, which we're in the process of doing right now, it makes it much easier when you, all you have to do is type in a keyword and say, "Okay, find, find anything, anything we have on Diamond Crystal Salt." We've reorganized our research shelves, so that when people come in, if they're looking for family history, or they're looking for other types of information, it's much easier for them to find it. And as I said, as people come in, and the volunteers, that's one of the things that they do, is help people when they come in, to try to find history about their homes, if they just came to this area, or history about the families if they happen to be visiting, and trying to collect additional information for genealogy. We also enhanced the museum. We're constantly doing some new displays this year. Chuck Humberg put together a display using the information that we already had on St. Clair churches. Where, as I mentioned to Mike, we were talking before, we're now using photo frame technology and video technology, so that instead of having a static display, when you might walk into a room, there's motion sensor video presentation panels that actually come on and give you two or three-minute information about that particular display room. We work with Therese Hawkins, again, because she's the building manager. We don't occupy the entire building, there's the community center on the lower level. And Therese was able to get a grant, and with that grant, we were able to do some landscaping, and also brick restoration in various parts of the building. We're also in the process of completely redoing an artifacts room for storage. We took the old pastor's garage and are converting it into a storage room, so that we have more sto, storage space for the artifacts that are being donated. We do promotion. We promote, promote ourselves to the community and throughout the area. You have a copy of the brochure. This is handed out to all new residents. The Chamber of Commerce hands a copy of this brochure to all new residents to St. Clair. We also do mailings. We have a mailing list of about 325 people. So for all of our programs, they receive a flyer that gives a lot of information and some enticement to come to one of our programs. We have newspaper stories. Jim Block has done a number of stories about activities. Just most recently, he did one about the fire department, the St. Clair Fire Department, because we have the program there. We do advertise and list our events in local magazines, like Blue Water Discovery. We do cable TV shows, Channel 6, and Blue Water Network. We have the website, and also Facebook. Do you want to say something about the Facebook page? Chrissy?
Yeah. Chris Cora started off Page Corp., he might be from St. Clair, if. And it's kind of, then I was asked to help him administrate it, and it's a great time for me. If somebody's talking about something, I get to throw up a picture from history that I have in file, because I'm the one that digitizes a lot of the, a lot of the pictures. So it's a, it's a positive thing for them, and it's a positive thing for us, too, because as much as I give out historical information and share pictures, they tell us the stories of growing up here in St. Clair, or things that happened, or put our stories together so they make a little bit more sense. And if it wasn't actually for that Facebook page, we would not have Georgie, that's where I met Georgie from, and then also Robin, one of our, one of our other volunteers. And then also people visit us a lot because of, in the summertime, we get a lot of visitors from out of state. So it's, it's been really a positive thing for, for no costs at all.
As you can see, they already have 2,684 followers, and that number is growing constantly. So there's, again, it's engaging people, and there are a lot of people from St. Clair that live in other parts of the country that keep in touch with St. Clair via this particular Facebook page. I wanted to put this in, we do receive donations. The, the city council has allocated, and we allocate, or there has been some money allocated to the St. Clair Historical Commission, but we also raise money on our own, through memorials, through program donations, through the antique car show, merchandise sales, museum visitors. This past year, during that fiscal year, we raised $4,106. But we're all volunteers. We have no paid staff, so all that money, the money that the, the city gives us, and the money that we raise, it all goes back into museum projects, to upgrade the museum, to improve the building, to provide for projects, to help promote programs, and things of that sort. So we feel that, that you're getting good value for the money that you invest, as well as the money that we raise. So in summary, I'd like to thank the city council, not only for the money, but also for your interest in supporting the St. Clair Historical Commission. And I'd like particularly to thank Mike and Annette, and also Therese Hawkins, for the support that they give administratively to us. And it would be inappropriate if I didn't thank Shirley and Diane, the office staff, because they definitely do provide us a good bit of support also. So with that, I'll open up. If you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
No, I just want to thank all you people on the commission for all the hard work that you do.
Yes. On behalf of the city, the council, our residents, we're fortunate to have a committee that's as active as you are. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go to our next piece of business, which is ordinances resolutions, resolution 15-10, millage request. As you remember, at our last meeting, we discussed the millage of renewal of the 2.49 for 10 years. Is there any questions, or pretty cut and dry, we agreed to the language, unless somebody wants to make a change in it? If not, do I hear a motion?
I got a few questions, if you're looking for them. I guess Mike could answer this. If they collect the 2.49 mils, would that go into general fund, or will we create a separate fund?
I'm sorry, the 2.49?
If it's collected, would that go into the general fund?
No, it goes straight into the major street fund, well, depending how we allocate it, go into the street fund. Currently goes into the major street fund.
My second question is, if this don't apply to the gravel roads?
As far as?
Repairs?
No. No, that would come from, we currently grade and add stone and different things like that, from those, so, so no. That would be more of a maintenance item, which is covered under the current.
I mean, if that's down a road, if we paved them?
Could you use it, for example, if you're going to special assess, and the city decided to do a percentage of it themselves? I suppose we could. Would be considered roadwork or road construction. That's not, I think the intent at this point, I think the intent, correct me if I'm wrong someone, but I think it's more to, to fix roads that are in poor condition currently.
Is there a reason why it goes to the major street fund?
Currently goes to the major street because it's, that's where the, the tax capture's there and the, the debt expense is there. And I believe, I'd have to look at the list, I don't have it with me right now. Roads they fixed in 2005 and '06, I believe are primarily major streets.
But this is a local?
So basically, right now, it's, it's in and out, it's a net transaction.
So it'd go into major streets and out into local?
Now, we could set it up, and we, we, I guess choose, we could say, based on miles of roads, we could put, allocate the 29 miles, and if we said 21 are, are local, we could do a split based on that, or we could do it based on needs, or, but it would have to go to the street funds. It would not go to the general fund, it would not go to any of the other funds, water, sewer, any of those. It'd strictly be streets.
So when will we set up that alloc, when will we set up that allocation percentages? In the language today?
No.
Or if the millage is passed, then we would sit down and decide which, what portions go to local street and what portions go to major streets?
I think as we, after we, if it were successful, then I think once we have some public hearings, that we, we'd do it at that point.
I think we need to be clear on, on where the millage money is going to go. If it's intended for our local streets, which has been the, the bane of our conversations, then I think we need to be clear that this is where it's going. And if we're going to allocate, then we should decide if we're going to allocate, so, so everybody understands that. I, I don't know if it's protocol to talk about an issue that's not, we don't have a motion on, but because we're talking about it, that's some of the things that, that have been coming back to me, and I don't mean 100 conversations, but maybe five or six since our special meeting we had for this, for this purpose, is that, what are you going to do with the money? Where's it going to go? What roads are you going to fix? The public wants to know. And I, and I think that's part of our problem in the past, has been that we've not had a defined project list, if I'm, if I'm saying that right. We may have had something that was defined when we did this thing in 2010, but during the last, during the last ask, we, we really didn't. And now I'm, now I'm kind of conflicted about it going to the major street fund without any kind of discussion about where it goes from there.
Is it appropriate to, to, to talk now, or?
Well, I don't think there's a motion on the floor. I think that it probably should be subject to a motion and support.
Do I hear a motion, or?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll support it.
I would like to record to reflect the conversations to the motion that we just had prior to the motion.
Okay, now we can have discussion?
Yes.
Just getting back to what Tom was saying, when we put this on the, on the ballot at the last time here, didn't we have a directive of which roads were going to be fixed, if I remember right?
I don't, I don't believe we ever created a list of roads that would be fixed. I think what we did is we, what we did is prepared a list of roads and the ratings of the roads, and we projected an amount that it would, that would be required if we fixed them all. It was in excess of, I want to say, $25 million. What we're asking for in this, and I know it's, we're asking again, and over a 10-year period, this would bring in 4, 4.7 million dollars. Obviously, this is not going to fix the problem. But it's, I think it's a start, and then, and some of the other discussions we've had, then we have to look at some of those items as well. So no, there was never a list created other than a rating of the roads, and if anyone in the city would like to see that listing, they're, they're welcome to stop by, and we have that information here. If you're interested in what your road is rated, or what others are rated, we, we have that information.
I think what people are talking about, Mike, is when you kind of put up Ninth Street, and you put up a few cross streets, and, you know, the, the.
When's mine going to be done?
Right. And, you know, I mean, I, I, I think a good broad explanation to people is that it's, it's going to go to the local road funds, and, you know, where's it going to be spent? I mean, it's going to be spent whatever needs it the worst, right? And is that, is that plan established? And the answer would be no, because we, we don't have a millage to work with, so. I mean, at least, those would be my answers. I, you know, I, I don't think you're going to put it on the major street funds to go with M29 or, or Clinton Avenue. It's going to be used on, on the local streets.
So, so, just to add, I guess M29 would be something the state would pay for.
Right.
Some of your major streets, we may not use the money on, because we do have, we, we do have the ability to capture some federal dollars, and we have, and we talked about that at our special road meeting, where we're going to fix, for example, from, from M29 back to Third Street. We're able to get some funding for that. So anytime we can get grant money, like we did there, we will for major streets. That money's not there for local. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to say, yes, we would split it 70/30. I think, again, that's something that, as a council, you have to look at and say, we've got, if, if it were to, to pass, we have $470,000 in a given year. What roads do we want to look at doing? Which, if you, if you fix one in, in Ward 1 or Ward 3, or whatever, whatever area we choose to do, what makes the most sense? And then I think what we've done in the past, when we've made some, and it's just small patchwork, but we looked at it and tried to do it equally amongst the three wards. I, I don't think anything would change from that past practice. I think we continue with that. But to actually create a list with, you know, again, over 10 years, 4.7 million, when we have such a large number, again, I think it's going, it would be more of, okay, what are we going to do in next year's construction season? We've got $470,000, and, you know, if Trumbull's going to cost 430, guess what? That might be the road we're doing. We may only be able to do some small repairs or something. And again, I don't know if that's an answer, but I think that's the, part of the discussions we've had. We know that we need to start fixing some of those streets. We know that we need to start fixing some of those streets.
I mean, a good example would be, what's the projected cost to fix Golf Street? I mean, it's...
Totally off top of my head, half million or more.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, like Golf Street from St. Clair Highway to Oak Street, you know? I mean, I'd be surprised if you could do it for half a million.
I think between Palmer and Oak Street, you'd be a half million dollar.
Oh, easy.
So...
And then we also have a water line, and that road is...
When that would be the water fund, right?
That would be the water fund.
So I think the point I was trying to make is that if we're going to pass this tonight and adopt this resolution, I just, I felt that by answering some of the questions that I've ran into, that a game plan and not just leave it open for any kind of a guesswork is, is a majority of this going for local roads? Or are we going to, are we going to take these projects one at a time and decide where it goes at that point in time? We talked about the amount of money that was going to cost to fix St. Clair Highway between Golf Street and M-29, and what the match would be. We talked about that money between M-29 and Third Street on Clinton Avenue. We've not, we don't have an estimate on Third Street between Vine and Mulberry. So, I mean, I could see $470,000 done in three blocks. I mean, that money's gone, and that's the only road we're going to do for the year. If you're looking at $800,000 to do Fredmore Highway, and we have whatever the match is, or St. Clair Highway, I mean, I mean, and that's the points I'm trying to address, so after tonight, we have a pretty good game plan, what we can explain to the people who are going to vote for this.
Well, I think it's council's intent to do as many local streets as possible. That's why we're asking for the money again.
But you already have two projects that have been approved that need matching funds out of the major street fund. St. Clair Highway and Clinton Avenue. Those are my only concerns.
And I might point out again, this is not an increase. This is a continuation of a current tax, the 2.49. And that, I've had a lot of people have asked, you know, you're going to, it's a new tax, so it's a continuation of what they're paying now.
So it's not a new tax?
Well...
Well, I mean, that's just what you say, it's not a new tax. Nothing's going to change if they vote for this.
If.
Carryover.
Yes.
And we do have to start someplace, you know? If there's no other discussion?
So been any other concerns about the length of time that this, that we're asking for? I mean, council members...
I'd like to see five.
I didn't hear what you said, excuse me?
I said, I'd like to see it for five years.
Well, I mean, if that's what it's going to take to get this passed, I mean, I would vote for five, but I don't think in five years, you're going to, I mean, what are you going to get done?
Half of what you, half of what you have over 10 years.
Yeah, which is, I mean, the 10 years isn't, you're not looking at a lot, but...
If I remember, at our last meeting, we did discuss it, and there was two, three, two of us that wanted five years, and the rest wanted 10.
Well, one was ambivalent about it. Didn't matter either way. I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference whether it's five or 10. We go five and ask for a renewal after five years, would it be easier for the public to accept, seeing that there's progress being made? I don't know. I mean, I think our intent is to start fixing roads as soon as we can, so it's not like we're going to squirrel this money away, use it for something else, but, so I don't think it matters one way or the other to me, if it's five or 10. I just, I think that we need to be clear about the money and our intent.
Although our resolution on the desk right now is for 10 years. There's no other discussion on it? I'm going to call the issue. Call for the vote.
McCartney?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Kinspatter?
Yes.
Cleman?
No.
Laporte?
Yes.
Resolution carried.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, the next item is reports from administration. Mr. Booth?
Your Honor, I have a few items this evening. Leaves and brush, pickup will continue until they're cleared. So if you still have some out front of your house, they are still working. The equipment's working, and the only thing that'll slow us down, I think, is the weather, but I think that looks good for the next couple of weeks out, so...
Question on that, Mike. Is any possible way they could pick up a few bags that somebody people put out, not knowing that service isn't long available?
They what, put out bags?
Recycling bags for the leaves and stuff. I see a few of them around town. Any particular reason they can't pick them up, take them to the compost pile?
Look at, you know a certain area?
Oh, there's a few. I mean, drive through town, you see some people that wait with those.
They can give us a call.
Pardon me?
They can give us a call here at City Hall. Are you just saying they want to set them out and have someone?
I see them now. You know, people are obviously not aware that service isn't long available. When you drive through town, there's a few of them out, and you're just going to sit there and, you know?
Until they break apart?
Take them to the pickup and take them to the compost.
Yeah, we can work with that.
Are we talking about extending burning at all?
Extending the burning?
Yeah. Because of the nice weather, I mean, is anybody questioning that?
I haven't had any calls.
Mine?
No.
No.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have two more items. Next would, things that come after the leaves drop, would be snow. Typically, the snow emergency is called by the city's police chief for snow and ice hazards. He's going to be at our next meeting, and again, I don't think there's, again, the weather can always change where you are in Michigan. I'll have him here next time to go over the ordinance. And then the last item is, and I know that has it on our agenda already for next time, but we have to start looking at the 2016 calendar as far as council meetings. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Your attorney?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Boards, departments, Annette, you have a vote?
I do, I do. The City of St. Clair was randomly chosen for a Michigan Bureau of Elections post-election audit. Our audit was conducted by the County Clerk's Office. The post-election audit process thoroughly reviews procedures performed before, during, and after an election. And I'm proud to announce everything was perfect, and there were no recommendations on procedure. I would like to thank all election workers, and specifically, my receiving board of Diane Cunningham and Shirley Aspenleiter.
Good job.
And our city clerk.
And the city clerk.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Boards, commissioners, committee members, anything here? Nothing? Unfinished business we have none? New business? We have an appointment to the Golf Commission. I understand that their recommendation is Tracy Conlon, is that correct?
I would move to approve.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of the hanging baskets and bridge boxes and flower beds. Therese?
Yes. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the Beautification Commission, and we are requesting approval of the 2016 flower order to the low bid that we received from Crosswell Greenhouse in the amount of $11,683.25. The bid was posted on our city website, and it was available at City Hall for anyone to pick up. We also mailed out bids to our bid list. The bid opening was held on Tuesday, December 1st, at 11 o'clock at City Hall. And I did include a bid summary for the city council members. We did ask for references from the vendors. And just for your information, our previous year, we do take donations for the baskets and the bridge boxes and the flower beds. Previous year, hanging basket donation fund amount was $11,845. So we will pursue those donations again this year. I didn't know if you had any questions regarding the bids. We received two bids, one from Crosswell Greenhouse, and the other bid was from Toits Flower Barn. There is a $2 increase to the hanging baskets from the previous year in the, in the low
Who had the bid last year?
Last year, the bid went to Gardens and Beyond. So we did send a bid to Gardens and Beyond this year, and using the address that we have here in the summary sheet, so it came back to us as Toits Flower Barn. And it has the same contact person as our previous bids that were listed under Gardens and Beyond.
I would make a motion to approve the low bid.
I'll support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Well, need a roll call vote.
McCartney?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Kinspatter?
Yes.
Cleman?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Carrie John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to claims and accounts, from November 20th and 25th, 5th, and December 2nd.
Make a motion to approve.
Support that motion.
Been moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public questions, comments? Have been anything? Nothing? I have nothing. No council members have anything else?
If nobody has anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I would support that motion.
Been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.